Thank you. And I believe we have now concluded the allegations here. Okay, then we'll go through the list again. But I ask all of you to please come down here and identify yourself, tell us where you're from, and then say what you think. So first up is Brian Hodges.
Good morning.
Good morning. Would you like us to sign on this sheet as well, or is your list?
Your list is okay.
Now, before you begin, Brian, Senator Davis has received his last call. He had a family emergency, and that's why he's not here. Certainly, he wanted to come in. So Hodges, good morning. Please go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you. Great to see many of you again. Senator Kates, Representative Kruger, and members of Maine's Government Oversight Committee. My name is Brian Hodges of Ashkoro, Maine, and I'm here today to request that you initiate impeachment proceedings against our Governor Paul LePage by taking a vote in the affirmative and then supporting such legislation. This is not a statement I, you, or any citizen of Maine should take lightly, but given the circumstances, it is unfortunately appropriate. For 46 years, I have called Maine my home. Twenty-three of those years, I dedicated my professional career to public service in state and local government. As each and every one of you know, public service is not a commitment to be taken lightly. For many of us, it is a calling that involves sacrificing time with family to serve the public. It is a calling to sacrifice more lucrative careers. Why make these sacrifices? We do so because we want to leave a legacy of making Maine a better place because of our efforts. But when serving the public, it is critical to do so with grace, with compassion, and with professionalism. Why is this important? Because the public wants to know they are treated fairly with the highest level of service possible. While I looked in Maine for all 46 of my years, the past few years have resulted in me hesitating when asked if I am proud to call Maine my home because of the reputation we've been given under the current administration. Nobody can question whether or not something happened between the governor, Goodwill Hinckley, and Mark Eves. Something has indeed happened. As mentioned in the Opega report, and I quote, "Events described in this information brief strongly suggest that the threat of Goodwill Hinckley losing state funding and subsequent holding of the payment already in process for Goodwill Hinckley's first quarter, that by 2016, are directly linked to the governor learning that Goodwill Hinckley had decided to hire the Speaker as president." The question remains, what involvement did the governor and his staff have? And did any involvement rise to the level of misconduct by a government official, which meets the Maine Constitution's definition of a basis for impeachment proceedings? You, Government Oversight Committee, passed Opega with investigating the allegation and reporting on their findings. In the state of Maine, across the country, and around the world, people experience allegations of wrongdoing, but after an investigation of due diligence, determinations are made, which sometimes result in charges being filed and other times do not. With the Goodwill Hinckley incident, that determination has not been reached yet. With an elected official ranking as high as a governor, the roles of authority and oversight are different than dealing with ordinary citizens. While citizens' fate is often inhabited by district attorneys, a governor's oversight is the responsibility of the legislature. You are the authorities. This committee is to the governor as the DA is to a citizen. This case is a clear example of why checks and balances are instituted between the executive, legislative, and judicial branches. Maine citizens elected you to represent them, and when you took your vote via Article 9, Section 1 of Maine's Constitution, you agreed to uphold Maine's Constitution, not parts of the Constitution, but all of the Constitution. The governor and his administration would not fully participate in Opega's investigation. Accused individuals may never willingly participate, so without the power of subpoenas, a body like Opega can never make a definitive conclusion, but you can. As Maine's Government Oversight Committee, you have the ability to ensure justice throughout state government prevails. Do not let the situation, being the first of its kind, dissuade you. Maine's Constitution does not require you to uphold your oath only when situations have a prior history. Instead, you are required to uphold your oath under any circumstance, and the Maine Constitution clearly states via Article 9, Section 5, that every person holding any civil office in the state may be removed by impeachment for misdemeanor in office. In conclusion, due diligence is needed, not only for Mark Eves, Goodwill Hinckley, or even Governor LePage. Due diligence is needed for Maine and all of its citizens to ensure our democracy is intact, credible, and worthy of support. Again, Opega was unable to make a determination of whether there was misconduct, but you have the authority and responsibility to do so. I and so many others want to see a fair and impartial hearing conducted, whether or not the governor and his staff participated. Your constituents deserve that. All Maine citizens deserve that. Maine deserves that. And even the governor himself deserves a fair and impartial hearing so his name can either be cleared or justice can be served. Let's make Maine a place of pride to serve and call home. Do the right thing and move the process of impeachment forward. Thank you for your commitment to serving the people of Maine.
Todd, thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Hodges? Senator Johnson?
Thank you. Not a question per se about the present testimony. Is that something you can give to our clerk?
I've given that a twenty-second.
You have already. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next, we have Cushing Sam. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Excuse us. I'll just go ahead and say good morning.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify. Senator, Senate Committee Chair Kates and House Committee Chair Kruger, members of the committee, my name is Cushing Sam. I am a resident of Saco. Included in my written testimony are a list of names of other people who have sped in and support my testimony. I won't even hear any of this in time. Would like to point out that four people were not comfortable giving their names, one of whom expressed some serious concerns about possibility of retaliation. First, I am not here to oppose any positions taken by the governor, nor am I here because I am embarrassed by public statements, he is me. I am here because I cannot stand silent in the face of the blatant contempt that the governor has demonstrated by his actions toward the governing process and by extension to the people of Maine. With respect to the events surrounding the offer of employment extended to Speaker Eves and its subsequent withdrawal, the governor has crossed the line. The governor is entitled to express his opinion of Speaker Eves and to express it publicly. What he cannot do is use his authority as governor of this state to cause personal harm to a political opponent solely as a result of the views of that opponent, nor can he use his authority to blackmail an independent organization in this state. His authority over the funds in question may be discretionary, but discretionary cannot be construed to mean the ability to withhold funds for malicious purpose. This is clearly what the governor or the governor's subordinates with his approbation have done. Failure to act further in this investigation will have the effect of empowering the governor. This is a man who has already held hostage the land for Maine's future program by failing to issue bonds that have met every single constitutional requirement except for his signature. These bonds were overwhelmingly approved by the voters of the state. While there is some latitude permitted in the timing of the bonds, clearly that that latitude extends only to financial considerations. He cannot refuse to issue the bonds for political purposes or because he disagrees with the purpose of the bonds. This is a man who has already vetoed bills, not because as he is constitutionally able to do so, because he objected to the bills. He did this with the stated purpose of wasting the legislature's time. This is a man who either already, through gross incompetence or malicious intent, refused to veto bills using the time-honored and constitutional method of issuing a veto. This is a man who has already withdrawn the names, fulfilling the vacancies on various boards and agencies so that they can actually do their work, not because he doesn't. This is just the context, and I understand. I will, I will...
I'm sorry, but again...
I understand. This is, this is, this is the context. The point essentially is that if the committee does not follow through with further actions, that this is a man who has demonstrated contempt already for the process. He's going to be further empowered. This is a man about whose some state residents dare not speak publicly because of their fear of retaliation, which is directly related to the Mark Eves incident. That incident in and of itself disqualifies the governor from continuing in this official capacity. When viewed in the context of the many other actions he has taken, the inescapable conclusion is that this governor has violated his oath of office. He has spat in the face of our constitutional process. The people of Maine elected the governor, not a demagogue. Only you can stop him. You must issue subpoenas for witnesses today to further your investigation. You must make your findings, and then I would hope that you would turn the matter over to the House to consider impeachment. Thank you very much.
Maybe someone has a question? No, thank you very much. Next is Jeanne Calpa. Put your hand in my mouth.
Hello, Senator Kates. Senator Kruger, members of the committee. My name is Jeanne Calpa. I live in Mammoth. I'm back filing for removal of Governor LePage from our position of post-exemption. But if he doesn't agree to resign, I need to do it. My reasons for appointing a Governor LePage to remove him from office are as follows. Like he has with Goodwill Hinckley's situation, which is only one of our many situations, Governor LePage has consistently abused his powers ever since his first term as governor. He consistently uses brilliant and blackmail tactics to intimidate people who don't agree with him into subletion and stalling. He has interfered in situations in which he has no right to do so. Some of the many known examples of LePage's brilliant and blackmail tactics are, I list their numbers, and I'm not going to use all of them for the time limitation, but some examples he's gotten and interfered with are many, so much. He's threatened to abolish state funding.
Excuse me. Just a second. I apologize. I want to say it again, and I do this is really everybody. We are here to consider...
I understand that.
Let me just mention, we are here to talk about Goodwill Hinckley, the knowledge of Goodwill Hinckley. I know that people are, there are issues with the governor, which may or may not be doubtful, but that's not why we're here this morning.
I know, but that's the point I was coming to, Todd, to jump over to that. He's reasoned that into the total state funding from Goodwill Hinckley, left to boycott Mark Eves, and Goodwill Hinckley boy hired as his resident of this school. It is very unfortunate that Governor LePage not only has how to work with people effectively, but he's definitely forced to brilliant and blackmail tactics in order to get his way, such as to deal with Goodwill Hinckley. Brilliant and blackmailing people is not okay. Effectively, the chief requires the ability to communicate well with people, to know when to push and when to stop pushing, to know how to use the art of compromise in working with people who don't happen to agree with you. Governor LePage has proven to lack this all-important leadership ability to action with Goodwill Hinckley until he's been found. The members of the Maine Legislature, both Democrats and independents, need to band together to do the right thing for Maine, however unpleasant it may be. Unfortunately, LePage out of the governorship does not save the best of us with the state of Maine and its citizens. You can continue to conduct that investigation, which you probably should do. You can stop hearing people. And in the end, we're all sitting, wondering what he's going to do next, where we're all finding ourselves back in this room doing another investigation. If the members of the Maine Legislature do not force LePage out of the governorship, and they are part of the party by being enabled, by allowing LePage to continue to reason somewhere else than with blackmail and tactics, this would not be okay. It would instead reflect very badly on members of the legislature. It would be letting Maine's citizens down by not forcing LePage out, and we certainly place him on with effective prison to the governor who not how to work well with people, which would be the current status residence. So I'm sure that Maine don't understand enough of it, okay? And if you want to continue this investigation, I think that's fine, but don't be surprised if you find yourself back in this room doing another investigation, and I think that you managed to screw up.
Thank you, God. Any questions? Chris Myers-Dash.
Good morning. Thank you, Senator Kates. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I will attempt to be gritty, and I appreciate the investigation and the due diligence that you all have done here to make sure that you are finding all the facts concerning this incident. But having sat through all morning and listened to your thoughtful questions and so forth, I would urge you not to overthink this issue, because I worry that we might be losing the forest for the trees here, because this is really fundamentally an issue of power, an abuse of power. And all of the other intricacies can wash away if we think about the abuse of power. My name is Chris Myers-Dash. I'm from Hallwell, but unlike many of you, I am not a Mainer. I'm relatively new to this. I come from Washington, DC. So I used to work on Capitol Hill, and I'm no stranger to political hardball and politics as usual, and infighting, logrolling, vote trading, and all the rest. And so Representative McClellan, I would respectfully disagree with you, or at least what I interpreted from your question, the implied idea that this is politics as usual. This is just kind of what happens in the sausage-making that is the legislative process. This is not politics as usual. This is more at home in a dictatorship in a Third World country, or what we used to call the Third World. It's more at home in a turn-of-the-century, turn-of-the-20th-century, big-city-machine politics. It's more at home with where I used to live in rural Mississippi, where you had segregationist politicians who did precisely this to attack civil rights activists. They would go after them in their homes. They would call the bank and get their loans withdrawn. They would call the school superintendent and get them fired from the school system. This is the behavior of a politician who thinks he has no bounds, no constitutional bounds. This is not, this does not have any home in 2015 in Maine. This is the politics of the field. And so what I see Governor LePage doing is that he's trying to cower his political opponents into submission, basically, but not with the strength of his arguments or his powers of persuasion, but by brute threats and intimidation. He preys upon the weakness of his victims. I mean, I think you saw that here, where the Goodwill Hinckley board chair could not even answer a basic question because he's afraid. They went back on their unanimous decision because they were afraid of what the governor would do. They were afraid of losing money. That is not a position that he should have to be in. He preyed, the governor exploits the partisanship of our country, right? He knows that we live in a polarized country, and that polarization is affecting our state as well, and he hopes, he counts on the support of his political supporters in order to defend him, right or wrong. But he also depends on the good people of Maine, and I know, Senator Kates here, personally, I know you are good people here, and you work very hard to do the job that many of us cannot do. And I know that he depends, Governor LePage depends on the good people of Maine in the legislature and elsewhere to do nothing. He counts on them to do nothing. And so if he is allowed to target a political opponent and get him fired from his job, what's to stop him from doing it again? If he can take down the Speaker of the House without paying the consequences, what does that mean for the rest of us who are political opponents of his? Like any schoolyard bully, he will continue to abuse his power until someone stops him. You all in this room have the power to stop him, and I hope you have the courage to assert that power, that constitutional power, to impeach this man. I don't know what else he has to do in order for you to take that step, and I urge you to have the courage to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Senator, thank you. First, I would say... Say hello to your wife. Chris's wife is my rather... Alan Tivitts.
Good morning, or good afternoon, whichever it is. Senator Kates, Representative Kruger, and members of the Government Oversight Committee, my name is Alan Tivitts, and I'm here today as a concerned Maine citizen to voice my comments on this particular situation. We would not be at this stage if this was not a serious matter requiring serious consideration. In reference to his first letter, Governor LePage is entitled to his opinion and entitled to give a response to this. My question with a voicing his opinion on hiring decisions by a private sector entity in this capacity as governor on official station areas, but we're not here to discuss the propriety of voicing an opinion. We're here to discuss his use of discretionary authority over funds for pressure private sector entities, fire, etc. This is the equivalent of Governor Boldacci going to Chinrow and saying, "Fire Peter Chinchette, or you will never get another state contract as long as I am governor." You must also consider, we're not taking any action in this case leads. If at some future date Representative Sanderson displeases the governor, does that jeopardize funding for Maine Veterans Homes, or mean board members of that organization will stop showing up for meetings? In my opinion, Governor LePage gets a free pass on this matter. Every legislator, every regulator, every municipal official, every independent commission, and every business with a state contract will be fair game. It's time for this committee and this legislature to hold Governor LePage accountable. Thank you.
Questions? Representative Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Tivittson. Just for the record, I have this, please, the governor, and so far the score is death four, governor nothing. I'm one in my case.
Thank you, sir. David Cracker?
Good morning. Good morning, all of you. I said, you look like you have a small... Well, I remember, really, I'd elected the office really second. And I'd elected the office, I knew that we had the answer to a highest thing, not lowest, highest thing. And from what I've seen, and from what we all know, you both need to pay debt forever. I would join the others and ask for their subpoena powers. I would even do as fast as to tell you, subpoena some of the other board members, Hinckley. Having been a board director on certain boards, you may find more information in the rest of that board. Somebody else may have seen that now. Who knows? But I just am here to just ask you to make it further, use your subpoena powers, investigate, see if any criminal offenses have occurred. In this, let's get a prosecutor. We need, under every possible thing we can do, to remove this individual from office. It is doing nothing but disgracing the state of Maine. Any questions?
Questions, Mr. Cracker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Cracker. Becky Halbrook.
How's that ring?
Halbrook.
Sorry, Halbrook.
I think I'm Naomi Halbrook in the state of Maine, unless you're Marholbrook. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Becky Halbrook, and I live in Pittsburgh. As a Maine resident, I speak as a retired person, a mother, a grandmother, and aunt, a great aunt, a friend, and a neighbor to many of my friends in Saginaw County. In addition, I am here to represent 700-plus Mainers who have recently signed an online petition at the website, a new website, called DearLePage.com. The website was launched in August in response to Governor LePage's statement that if the people of Maine wanted him to resign, he would do so. We took him at his word. We are asking him via the online petition and by mailing directly to him, postcards, emails, and other messages, and asking him to resign immediately. And we intend to continue this effort during the next few months, and ultimately, we do hope that Governor LePage will resign from his office. But really, I'm here today representing this group with this sentiment, which clearly shows that they do not wish him to remain in office. My message to the committee today is regarding the Goodwill Hinckley investigation, we commend this committee for pursuing this bipartisan investigation of Governor LePage's involvement in Goodwill Hinckley matter. We trust that the committee will demonstrate its further determination and fortitude by continuing to pursue this investigation in order to produce a full and complete report of the Goodwill Hinckley matter. While the Opega informational brief is a good beginning, there are many, many unanswered questions remaining, and those questions must be addressed and answers must be documented. The people of Maine will not be satisfied until the investigation is completed and the full set of facts are available for all of us to assess. If there are witnesses and documents that can only be obtained by issuing subpoenas, those subpoenas should be issued by the committee. The testimony should be taken under oath, and the witnesses should be subject to cross-examination to ensure that the complete truth is told to us. The truth is an important matter, and it is at stake here, and there seems to be no alternative way to determine the truth and complete the investigation. With respect to allegations of additional abuses of power, we've heard plenty about that this morning, and I'm not going into it, but I do think that the group I represent encourage and support committees in pursuing this investigation, even if it means taking on other abuses of power. We believe that the expansion of this investigation to include other allegations would be entirely appropriate. Such an expanded... There is a legal question that has been posed recently concerning the use of the attorney's fees provision in the state's liability insurance policy. It is being used apparently, according to the media, for payment of the governor's private attorney's fees in the Eves civil lawsuit. An independent prosecutor could research the terms of the insurance policy and determine whether the insurance policy is available for payment of the governor's attorney's fees in his defense in the Eves lawsuit. We suggest this needs to be looked into. In conclusion, we commend you, uh, we commend to you a writing of Representative Charlotte Warren, who I don't believe is present today.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I won't, maybe she's going to speak, but, um, the words that were published by her in the Kidderback Journal recently, under the title, "The Governor's Acts of Intimidation Threaten the Fabric of Our Democracy," and I'm only going to give a small quote because it's, it's very eloquent, and I commend it to you. Uh, she says, "I urge Mainers to make their voices heard at the public hearing on Thursday." Blah, blah, blah. "It's an honor to repeat to speak your minds about the report and your expectations for your government." So she's, um, she's supporting this as we come forward, even though many of us are not used to sitting at a podium and speaking to this, you know, committee such as yours. "The fact-finding report will serve as the basis of any further action, including a determination that laws were broken, referral to a special prosecutor, or the initiation of impeachment proceedings. The questions we must answer are very serious." I agree, they are very serious. "Questions about intimidation by this state's highest elected official, the misuse of public funds to punish a lawmaker for his voting record, and a political grudge turned personal vendetta that harmed the man's livelihood. This is not simply about LePage and Eves. This is not simply about LePage and Eves. It's about each and every Mainer in this state, and whether they have the right, they have to live their lives looking over their shoulders for fear that they might offend the wrong person in power. It's about each and every Mainer in this state for fear that they might offend the wrong person in power. If they do or say the wrong thing, will they be punished? Do we want our elected representatives answering to us, those who elected them, or to another elected official? This is simply about standing up for our democracy." That end quote.
Thank you very much for being here. Does anyone have a question? Senator, thank you. That's David Travers.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Um, David Travers from Westbrook. Um, I've been following the governor for many years, and, um, I want to bring a perspective that I've heard covered in a tangential way, but not, not directly. I want to discuss the perspective of a voter. Now, when I, when I go into my booth, at my, my voting booth, and I see that sheet of paper in front of me, I make lines connecting the arrows, and I, I have assumed until recently, until specifically the Marquis's Goodwill Hinckley case arose, that when I, when I drew the line for my representative, uh, that I was really, he was really going to represent Westbrook. He wasn't going to represent the governor. He, maybe he wasn't going to represent me, but he was certainly going to represent this country, that he was going to speak his mind. the citizen legislators who are extremely vulnerable when it comes to the income that they earn, it raises the question as to whether or not someone can be entirely objective about saying whatever they want to say, or the, or, I, I wonder even now whether legislators are looking over their backs, is, is LePage listening to what I'm saying? Has anybody spoken to my employer? What will happen if I, if, if I vote this way? And I begin getting an image of Kazakhstan, well, I read about it anyway, where they have an absolute tyrant, and they have a bunch of people running for various offices, and you, you basically vote for whomever you want because it doesn't make any difference. Because you're really only, only voting for the top dog. You're not really voting for this person, you're voting for whoever's on top. And that's my fear. What I see, what I have seen over the years disturbs me at a very profound level. What I see is a shredding of our democracy. It's not just the ridicule of the legislature by the various antics of Kazakhstan. It's not just the disrespect of the legislature. I find abhorrent. It's the fact that, um, he doesn't believe that anybody else should have the power to decide where this state goes or what this state does. And if you're against him, then you're against him, and you're on his perspective and, and you better beware. And from the position of a voter, that's, that scares the dickens out of you. And I'm not the only one that I've talked to who's, who's been beaten, who's, who's talked about that kind of thing. I've seen it in the pa, in the newspaper, I, I talked to friends about it. And it scares me when you have a, when you have a, a, an institution of your legislators, citizen legislators, who just conceivably might be afraid to vote a certain way because the top dog doesn't like that. And, um, the shredding of democracy is not a small thing. This committee has the power to stand up to that. It's not just this particular case I'm thinking of not making appointments, I'm thinking of the land for Maine, um, Maine's future, where he simply snubbed his nose at the voters, at the voters, at Maine people. And at legislators who say, "Well, don't be silly. We, we can't do this stuff because you haven't approved my selling wood, woodlots for public lands, so we, we can't do that." I'm scared. I'm scared, and I pray. I pray that this committee, that this legislature has the courage to do what is needed to be done. Because if someone gets away with this, it will be like a cruel original shark. There will be no end to what this governor will do. He's already made threats, there have been a press held, people tend to won't stop there. And, um, as, as a citizen in what I thought was a democratic state of Maine, quite honestly, I'm scared.
Thank you very much for being here. Any questions? This is Representative Kell.
Thank you. Oops, excuse me. Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I got it.
Not a question, not a question, just an observation. As a member of the party who could or might be perceived as, as you've spoken, um, there are several of us around the board chair who have had situations where we disagree. We can really assure you that we're an independent lot, and we actually do what we feel is right. There are some processes that we can question and some that we can't because of the way state government is set up. But I can assure you, you can sleep nights because there are several of us, as Representative Sanderson mentioned, who have, have disagreed, and we do come out of town. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Senator. Debbie.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. I'm Deb Fay from Hallwell, and I'm here as a parent to talk about the, just to mention the impact of this case on students of Goodwill Hinckley and young people in general in Maine. At home, we talk politics with our kids. From the start of LePage administration, we discussed the main calling and bullying. We watched comedians poke fun at our governor on national TV and laugh along with everybody else. Um, I thought things couldn't get worse, but I was wrong. Personal vendettas, intimidation, ignoring checks and balances, refusing to play if he can't get his way, and thwarting the will of these voters. So the question is, what does this teach young people of Maine about politics? Um, this is not leadership, and it is time for a lot of vocal conversations. Thank you all for sending us this.
Thank you very much for being here. Sorry, Jim St. Pierre?
I'm the Jim, this is Mr. Joe. He's felt a funny.
Jim St. Pierre.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. Good morning, Jim St. Pierre, resident of Brunswick, a Maine, like many of you. Um, I've been listening to other people performing this morning to speak, and in the interest of time, I'm slashing my written comments, trying to cut them down, but I'd like to leave with you copies of, of testimony. Um, and it doesn't say it in my written comments, but I didn't want to be here today. I, I talked to several legislators and asked them, "What's the best venue to, to present to you what I want to give to you today?" And I was advised that this is the best venue, so that's why I was here today, too. I'd like to read some of my written comments. I didn't say, "I'm also a Maine director of Restoring Mountain Woods, a nonprofit based in Hallwell. We believe that Governor Paul LePage has obligated his responsibilities as Maine's top elected official. The Goodwill Hinckley matter cannot be judged in isolation. It is part of a long pattern of behavior that Governor Page demonstrates that he's unwilling to properly discharge many of the essential constitutional powers and duties of his office." I'm skipping a lot of stuff here. "Maine has no process for citizens to recall the city governor. However, the Maine State Constitution provides that, quote, 'every person holding any civil office under this state may be removed by impeachment,' unquote, upon presentation of charges by the Maine House of Representatives against a public official, quote, 'for misdemeanor in office,' unquote, at trial before the Maine Senate. Just one weekend last month, we collected hundreds of signatures on petitions requesting that the Maine House of Representatives present charges against Governor Page for misdemeanor in office, and that the Maine Senate try the impeachment to judge whether the charges warrant removal from office." And I can leave copies of those, um, petitions with you. Other petitions we've seen online seeking impeachment or recall of Governor Page have amassed nearly 40,000 signatures. So today, we're exercising only legal recourse that is available to Maine citizens to seek redress of our grievances against the governor, who has shown himself repeatedly to be defying the face of law. We respectfully request that the Maine Legislature uphold its constitutional responsibility to the people by impeaching and trying Governor Page for misdemeanor in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Pierre. Any questions? Senator Burns.
Senator, thank you. Just quickly, you say one of your petitions has 40,000 signatures. Ask me.
Um, our petition, we collected hundreds of signatures just by standing in one place for one weekend in September. But I also looked online and found that, um, that other people have put petitions on nothing that we had initiated for impeachment or recall of the governor. I added a lock down, it appears to me, that there are nearly 40,000 signatures on those.
Next. Any questions? Senator, thank you for being here. Good morning, Senator. Thank you. Thank you. Jim Ramsey.
My name is Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, superb. I feel I'm better looking around, seeing a lot of average Mainers sitting in front. For 40 years, I was education, made trips to downtown, and there is, and I always return saying I was very impressed with the expensive citizen haircut. And little bit of splinter, and those are the lobbyists. While we're here, initially, this focus on Marquis's Hinckley situation, as many people here have said already, is broader than that, and we start necking the dots, the whole series of events where we've seen the issues of abuse of power. I'll boil mine down, I'll only deal with three paragraphs, I just have two pages. Listen, I have chairs. "The purpose of my letter is to underscore that profoundly incompetent and arrogantly dismissive tenure of Governor Paul LePage. As a public school teacher for over 40 years, I'm extremely upset that LePage is a real woman, not a horribly respectable role model in the incapable of Maine. Paul LePage has many embarrassing statements, and well known, but as a citizen of Maine, it is ridiculous statement made to a citizen of the state universities as to Maine and others."
Mr. Marquis. So again, I hate to add that you're, really, you might try to keep a focus on this Goodwill Hinckley situation, but I think that...
I understand, and I think part of the problem is you people are being responsible and fact-finding and doing the procedure, and you're supposed to, well, they have a governor, not as Mrs. Lang said, talking to others, I would say, isn't a proverbial thing, uh, because everyone in the state of Maine, including yourselves, isn't playing by the rules. So we're trying to play with the rules, we catch the fox who's not playing by the rules. I think that's part of the issue.
on this good Will Hankley situation, but I think that...
I understand. And I think part of the problem is you people are being responsible and diet finding and doing the procedure as you're supposed to. Well, they have a governor, not as Mrs. Lang said, talking in notes, others have given us, because we're verbal figures. As everyone, as the man, including yourselves, isn't playing by the rules. So we're trying to play with the rules. We catch the fox who's not playing by the rules. I think that's part of the issue. One concrete response I'll leave. We're talking about Hankley, Marquise, talking about racist people, but there's also natural environment out there. Shannon's lived on planning board for ten years, very much involved in the lakes and the health of the lakes. Maine's lakes are a horrible situation. Eighty percent of Maine's lakes have needs. Meanwhile, nothing's happening because it's not on the social agenda of our government. So that's just one example of something we have to address.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you, sir, for being here. Robert Moore. For the first time, I say good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I wanted to say, exactly, so I want to thank you all for taking so much effort to figure the bottom of this situation. And again, I'd like to stay on point. But obviously, others before me have made a lot of very good points that I don't now have to come out and say. But speaking of petitions to impeach the governor, I have copies here of a petition to impeach Governor LePage, which I have collected nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven signatures. This was an online petition. And quite frankly, many people have not gotten to see it. So saying that there were nineteen thousand people who happened on this petition, online, anywhere, and signed it from Maine, I think is a very large statement. I'm going to leave you all with a copy of that. And, you know, I just want to say that it's very obvious to me, just judging by what you folks have said and the others and the report from OPAGA and everything, that the governor has stepped out of bounds beyond his legal parameters. And again, this is a systemic problem. This is what he's doing every day, all day long. And it's got to stop. We can't have this. This is not right. This is not government at its best. What are we teaching our children? What are we teaching other politicians? Is it okay to do this? Oh, it's not okay. It's not right. We've got to stop it. Only you can do that. Only you can put your foot down and say, "No more." It can't continue. I appreciate very much everybody's efforts today in trying to move on with this statement. I'd just like to say that I'm not a politically, I'm not a political person. I rarely step into the political arena at all. But I'm also a Penobscot Indian. And when I found out that Governor LePage threatened our government, that he would veto the Violence Against Women Act and put a gum up in the process for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, which helps adopted and so on children reclaim their heritage and things, this was the last straw for me. And this was also something that was a catalyst to our tribes recalling our representative from the House of Representatives. And I don't represent, I do not represent the Penobscot Nation. I represent myself and these nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven people. Please impeach this man. Please put him through process what needs to be done to get rid of this. This is, it's totally ruining everything. Nothing can go forward. The hundreds of thousands of dollars that must have been spent here today and everywhere in every one of these situations is appalling, to the point of a few dollars that some fraudulent social services cheaters are getting. I bet it's a drop in the bucket compared to what's going on with this particular thing itself alone. So please, I beg you to please subpoena the people that you need to subpoena. Expand. Expand the scope of the investigation because you would not believe the things that I've run into in speaking with these people, these nineteen thousand people that have gone on. This is just the tip of the iceberg. So please, I, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Hendrick Pidiens. May I pronounce that right, sir?
Good afternoon, Jim.
Good afternoon to you. And thank you all for what you're doing. It is not an easy task. Chairman Cates, Representative Kruger, distinguished members of the Committee on Government Oversight, I am Hendrick Pidiens from Brooklyn. I have read carefully OPAGA's report. Given the real constraints affecting its development, it is a strong piece of reportage and analysis. Still, its story is just a point on a much, much larger current. It is a sad day for Maine. Governor LePage's negative effects on the state and its processes to the government present a highly unusual situation. Only the legislature can protect us from further damage. You could pass several different forms of supermajority legislation to bail the act. Or you could find Page's performance malfeasance in office and remove him. That route would require a lot of work from your committee. I'm going to suggest even a bit more. I have four lines of counsel. The first is to consider the nature of the judgment required of you. It is not a political partisan matter. The governor's actions have indiscriminately affected members of all parties. While it may ultimately include criminal matters, such are not the venue of the legislature. No, you are being asked to perform the most important kind of civil review of executive performance you will ever be called upon to make. The second line of counsel is to ask yourselves what cumulative level of evidence must ground your recommendations to the legislative body, i.e., as American jurisprudence refers to it, some credible evidence, substantial evidence, preponderance of the evidence, clear and convincing evidence. The third is for you to keep clearly and constantly in mind the consequences for the governance of Maine if we continue for three more years what we have lived through the last five. I submit, we should not have to accept that. Which takes me to the fourth line of counsel. Before you begin further deliberations, I would urge you to afford yourselves a clear rendering of the pulse of the legislative body for which you are working. Divide the other hundred seventy-four members of the legislature into twelve cross-cutting lists of fourteen or fifteen legislators. Each of you would, in the next two or three months, or two or three weeks, complete one-on-one, twenty minutes, not for attribution, scripted, and I've given you a script in my written test, confidential interviews with the legislators on your list. Each of you would try to develop a sense of where your peers are on the nature of the issues. What's at stake? How they think it should be approached? How serious they think it is? Whether it should be allowed to continue? The interview script should make it plain, however, that the interviews are not a pre-poll of legislative members' views on matters that you and they have yet to consider. Such question would be premature and inappropriate. Were I in your shoes, I would want to have the results of that five-hour commitment from each of you under your belts before you proceeded further. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Representative Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Pidiens. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
You've done a great job, very extensive, and I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. We don't have anybody else on the list. Are there others who would like to speak? Oh, excuse me. No, no, excuse me.
Good afternoon. William Brown from In-N-Out. And I'll be very brief. I speak basically about the three-year notion, what we have to look forward to in the next few years. And it just seems like there's two basic choices, and they're all expensive. But one of them gives us credence to be able to carry on a governing structure in this state. And that is for you to follow the rule to go with subpoenas and meet the force of legislature. The other cost is the potentialized head if this behavior continues from our neighbor on the adjacent corner of the next street. It could get much more expensive with his actions plus the ramifications of what follows after he leaves and the cost of those things as he has affected the future. So I just simply say, I hope you will keep pursuing this. We're doing a good work, and you are doing, all of you. And good luck, because we have, all of us, along the road, hope for this. But we need to do the work. And I hope people will listen to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Can you ask a long one, sir? Jim, for the...
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for your long and many contributions to the musical culture of Maine.
You'll notice I have not written a song about it. Thank you, Ed.
All right, are there others, other members of the public who would like to speak?
Just very briefly, since I was here, listening to Ole Donn, just a couple of points. Representative Campbell, Representative Sanderson, both mentioned the...
So, sir, could you just identify yourself and tell us where you're from?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. You know who I am, anyway. Yeah, I'm Harold Booth. I'm from Hallawell. And I have watched politics in Maine and nationwide for a number of years. Both of the representatives indicated that going up against the governor, they had not voted. I commend you for doing that. I will just mention that in the override vote on Senator Cates's bill that would have gotten the governor off of the bonds for, the land for Maine future, there were apparently six representatives who had voted in favor of that bill initially, and they voted. So it is, I don't go into what happened in those conversations that were held that caused those representatives to vote, but they did. I would also mention specifically Senator Cates. In your, the governor has recently presented his criticism of your chairmanship of this committee and indicated that after your time, quote, "His time will come." One wonders what he's suggesting here, but it sounds like retribution is what he has in mind. And as a citizen of the state, for the chief executive of the government to act in this way against the people who represent the people of the state is appalling. And so please, make the necessary decisions that you need to make within your committee to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Any questions? Thanks for being here, sir. Yes, sir.
First of all, my name is Mike Loy, and I live in Booth, Maine. Senator Johnson is my representative, one of my representatives. I also, like others here, strongly encourage you to very seriously consider whatever means is appropriate in making of a neighbor of mine a more permanent resident since he lives only, his house is only two hundred yards away from mine. But I will also say, I am a Mainer by choice, having lived here for the past thirteen years. And by background, that is somewhat important around my opinion is, I've been involved in international human resources for forty-five years and have operated probably thirty-six or so countries in the world. And I will tell you flat out, I have rarely seen an elected representative in the democratic system and representational republic operate with as much callousness, rudeness, et cetera, and beyond the means such as exhibited by the good Will Hankley case as what I'm witnessing in this state. One of the reasons we moved here was because this was a civil state. And it was one that had a strong political tradition of integrity, both parties having offered many distinguished people the service in this country. And to see the denigration of that tradition, such as what is going on now, demands, in my opinion, of the citizens over at this state that this committee take the action that is necessary to stop this abuse of power.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here, sir. Any questions?
My name is Suzanne Hedrick, and I've been a noble girl. I am a proud member of the Franco-American community. Mr. LePage, whom I call Mr. Rampage, has been a disgrace to my identity from day one, when he had the labor panels taken down, when he told the NAACP to kiss his butt, and on and on and on. He's brought back that term, the ignorant Frenchman. And I resent that. And I resent what he has done and continues to do with the state of Maine. What he has done to the Hankley School, disgraceful, appalling. I wish right now that Mike Misha would have stood in Maine's house because things would surely be a whole lot different than they are today. And I really thank you for your persistence in this, Mr. Cates, Senator Cates. I read about you, and I really thank you for your leadership in this effort. We really need to impeach this man.
Thank you for being here. Any questions? Senator, any questions? Are there others? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Neils. I'm a lifetime resident of St. George River Valley in Appleton, Maine.
Sorry, so what do you live in?
My name is Will Neils. I'm a lifetime resident of St. George River Valley in Appleton, Maine. It's northern Knox County. In my opinion, I'm from God's country, Knox and Waldo County. Don't just throw the best pot in Maine, but on the east coast of America. And for the last five years, through the efforts of a lot of people in this state, we've managed to change the culture here. And I think that's what we're talking about. We're talking about change in culture. What we're seeing is repercussions of a change in culture. I've been a social organizer and activist for twenty years. I was eighteen years old when I started coming to these halls and these buildings. And I remember some, but the vast majority of you, I do not remember from twenty years ago. Mr. Gannon, I do. But it's okay. Don't worry. You probably remember me, too. But the point is, is I've been a dissenter the vast majority of the time. Many of you remember that well. I'm sure Mr. Slavsky does. And the last five years of my life have really been changing because I was raided by a multi-jurisdictional drug squad, the DEA boys, Jason and Jim Pease in Knox and Waldo County back in September 2010. And so that rounded me up and made me an activist for marijuana rights and for medical marijuana patients and caregivers here in the state. And we worked hard. A lot of people all over the state came together, lawyers, caregivers, patients, and even some newly-elected representatives, such as Ms. Anderson over there, worked hard to create one law about medical marijuana that would change the lives of thousands of people. The reason why I practice all this is because before that, for years, I was just a turner. I faced FBI repression. I survived at least one, at least one federal grand jury. And the point is, is that what happened...
Excuse me, sir. We would all be interested to hear your personal story, if you could.
I will. I will. The point is, is what's happened in this state for a long time is repression. And what I'm saying is it happened to people who didn't have voices. What's happening is different is it happened to someone with a voice. And I'm glad finally it did. Because what's necessary is that we put this state to line once and for all and make it clear that fear and coercion are no way for a civil society to live. The point is, I see... It is the path where when you're confronted with injustice, when you see bullies, when you see people who are doing the wrong thing, that is not in the best interest of the community, you stand up and you stop it. And the reason I say that is because I've dedicated every twenty years of my life to that. It's the way I was raised, and I'll never stop. That's why I only got ten percent of the vote when I ran for legislature last year, being elected. But the point is, is each and every one of you has the opportunity to actually do a larger investigation. I think it's required. I'm not going to call for impeachment in Maine. There's a lot of Democrats doing that. I'm a Democrat, I'm not a Republican. I'm not going to call for impeachment. I ask you, please, turn over every stone. Look at everything that these people bring forward. I don't know all the horrible things this man no doubt has done in our name, but I feel very, very safe in expecting that tons more misdeeds will come forward. And I just ask that you accept that responsibility and remember, and walk this path to its final conclusion. Turn over every rock, bring out the information, and let the people of this state know the truth. I apologize for making too many personal statements. It was contentious, sir. And I appreciate the opportunity, Senator Katz, Representative Kruger. Please, do your jobs, investigate, and make sure that this never happens again in our state, that no politician ever believes that they can operate with impunity against the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Any questions? Anybody else who would like to address this part of hearing? Yes, please come down.
My name is Meredith Ayers. I'm from Sears Court. And I didn't come here to speak today. I came here to listen. But after all the listening, I do have something to say. The importance of the rule of law. Every citizen here, all of you who came here, we drive the speed limit, we pay our taxes, we are held accountable for our actions. And it's discouraging, it's demoralizing to see the supposedly most powerful person in Maine thumb his nose at the law and disrespect the rule of law. And I was very gratified to hear all of the people here, they say that, and I thank you all for the work that you're doing. But this is about the rule of law, and I'm hoping it may be sure that everybody, nobody gets a free pass. Everybody has to obey the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Cynthia, is there anybody else who would like to address this? Saying no one else, we're going to be, it's appropriate to close this observatory meeting soon. And the next step for us would be to go into work session. Expecting to have to break much, make a short one at the end of lunch. You said it, Dan.
I'm certainly okay with that. I just probably the people might have come here also from the business to see here our work session, but if you think we should wait a little longer, I'm okay with that.
What's the pleasure, Booth? You're having lunch? Keep going? Keep going? Okay, go. All right, move down, go into work session. That's your handle. Mr. Chairman, why don't you give yourself five seconds? Yeah. So we can keep going. If you don't get it formed, it begins, it starts. What time is it? Twenty minutes of one. Twenty of them.